Good evening. Forgive us for running late. We had several matters in closed session that took us longer than expected. We apologize for the delay. So, let's begin. This is the Ridgewood Village Council Public Workshop. The date is January 8th, 2025. The time is 7:42 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Councilmember Mortimer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Windegrad.
Here.
And Mayor Vajianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we go to public comment, I'd like to call up George Petracas. Come on up, George. Why don't you have a seat right over here? And press the button on the mic. And why don't you introduce yourself? You have to speak right into the microphone to be heard. So if you could pick this up?
There you go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is George Petracas. I'm half Greek, half American now, since I lived here more than half of my life. And I'm the new owner of the former Greek to me in East Ridgewood Avenue. And very soon, you're gonna have a new Greek restaurant with flavors from the island of Kallimnos.
And you're from Kallimnos, right, George?
I am from Kallimnos, yes.
Uh huh. And how long have you been thinking about opening a Greek restaurant?
Many, many years. Many, many years. But it was meant to be. And thank you for the opportunity.
It has been my pleasure working with you on this. And I have seen how you have transformed what was its Greek to me. It is no longer its Greek to me. It is Meltemi. Why don't you tell everybody what Meltemi means?
Meltemi is northern wind in the Aegean Sea that happens only in the summer. So if it happened that you were in Greece, someplace in the Aegean, and there was a big storm, that was a Meltemi.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
And why don't you tell us a couple of the items you plan to have on your menu so that people get an idea of what kind of place this is gonna be?
Okay. Stuffed grape pine leaves from my island. A slow-cooked lamb stuffed with rice that he cooks overnight. Stuffed calamari with feta cheese and calamari and spices.
And I know you talked about a lot of fish, correct?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Lots of fish, you know, not the ordinary, average Greek restaurant has. Plenty of fish, different kinds upon availability, you know? Whatever we find in the season, that's what we're gonna serve. Sometimes it's cheap, sometimes, you know, more expensive, but it's gonna be fresh. I go to the market, to the fish market twice, maybe three times a week. I'm prepping now a refrigerator to maintain my fish to the best possible temperature. Yeah, yeah. And everything is gonna be fresh, handmade, to order. It's gonna be good. It's gonna be good.
And I see you've got workman's clothes on. I gather you're there working on the place?
Well, this is my... This is what I do for a living. I'm a plumbing contractor. So this is what I've been doing. But now, soon, I'm gonna do what I love to do, you know?
Well, on behalf of the council and the entire community, we wish you lots of good luck. And we all look forward to your opening up.
Thank you, thank you.
Great. Thanks so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, before we move on to the public portion, each new business owner in Ridgewood receives a letter from my office when they receive their certificate of occupancy, inviting them to come to a council meeting to introduce themselves to the council and to the community. And I expect Mr. David Arabia from Corcoran Infinity Properties to be with us at next week's meeting to introduce himself to the council and to the people of Ridgewood.
Great. Thank you so much, Keith. And we're gonna take something a little out of order tonight. We have Beth McManus, who is the village's affordable housing consultant. And so we're gonna take her... Actually, no, we're gonna do public comment first, forgive me. So I'm gonna open it up to public comment. I don't think that's on, Cynthia.
Green light. Cynthia O'Keefe, Ridgewood resident. I'm sure everyone's riding high on the accolades from Monday's meeting, where we had some dignitaries here to talk about how great Ridgewood is. But I think a new year is a time to reflect on ways to improve, to do things better, more effectively, more efficiently, and make smarter choices. And the reality is that new beginnings also require things to end. Just yesterday, our Surgeon General Vivek Murthy was urging Americans to rethink how we are living our lives. These were his parting prescription for our country. And Ridgewood talks about being green, but we're actually... If we're still talking about turf, we're not green. Each of you took an oath attesting that you would be fair, just, and impartial. But what do those words mean if they aren't backed up by anything? And they're still antiquated thinking, where, you know, matters of health are concerned. I don't think that we can sit here today and talk about artificial turf fields, which I've talked about many times at many of these meetings. You've had experts write to you, and still, it's falling on deaf ears. And it's unfortunate. And unfortunately, and I'm gonna pick on you a little bit, Frank, at the League of Women Voters, during the election time, you spoke about turf being safe. You made a declaratory statement saying, "The EPA said it's safe. Crumb rubber was never talked about for the Shedler property." And you said you read that application cover to cover and that it was well thought out and thorough, were your words. And you spoke about environmental leadership as one of the pillars of your campaign, having our village be the standard that other towns will look to for guidance. I'd like to know, from you and from everybody else, how are we supposed to do that if we're still selecting and choosing things that don't make good sense health-wise for our children? Our children don't consent to be on these fields. So I'd like you to answer that question tonight for everybody. And there were many disclaimers in that EPA report. There was two versions of it, and I read them cover to cover. And I'd like you to elaborate a little bit on that. And I'll bring it up week after week until I get my answers. So, you know, you said you're gonna be a new voice, but I wanna know what a new voice is saying if we're just saying the same old message. We talk about trees. This is last year's calendar, but we're talking about cutting down the trees, all the trees at Shedler. By the end of the day, you will have cut them all down. That's our protection for our neighborhood. 500 people wrote a petition and signed it and said they were unhappy with this overdevelopment plan. So I'd like to know if that will be part of your, you know, process for this year to make different choices, smarter choices. Thank you.
Gillian Krugman, Ridgewood resident. As a Ridgewood High School alum now pursuing a degree in environmental studies, I've learned one undeniable truth: Prevention will always be more effective than a cure.
Gillian, excuse me. If you could make sure you speak... You have to speak very close to the mic to be heard. Thank you.
We can build all the PFAs filtration plants in the world, but if we continue approving projects that emit these toxins, any so-called progress is nothing more than a mockery of change. I wanna talk about artificial turf as well. The same artificial turf that my gym classes were taught on. Initially called Chemgrass, artificial turf or AstroTurf was created by the Ford Foundation and Monsanto Industries in 1964. The technological design remains the same today. The majority of these fields are built with rubber crumbs mostly made from recycled tires. In 2007, the nonprofit Environment and Human Health found 25 chemical compounds in crumb rubber, including carcinogens and endocrine disruptors. That same year, the California Environmental Health Hazard Assessment released a report concluding that ingestion of these chemicals posed almost three times higher risk of cancer. Unlike traditional grass fields, artificial turf creates a heat island due to its inability to vaporize water and cool the surrounding air. Athletes report burns from the heated rubber and their shoes melting on contact. This heat intensifies the release of PFAS and methane, exposing student athletes to dangerously high concentrations. A study revealed that children exposed to PFAS experience effects comparable to low-level lead exposure. We're talking about developmental delays, permanent disabilities, and childhood cancer. The, quote, "natural alternative infills," artificial turf companies have begun to advertise present similar risks. These infills are typically made of silica sand coated with acrylic polymers, which break down into carcinogenic materials and plastic debris. Paul Vigenos claimed that PFAS are everywhere and therefore should be exempt from regulation. By that logic, should we have ignored the dangers of lead in hindsight? Should we have dismissed the signs because lead exists in everything? Our dishware, our paint, even the Earth's crust? Would the 1978 Lead-Based Poisoning Prevention Act be met with the same criticism? How about the 1986 banning of lead in plumbing? The Lead Contamination Control Act of 1988? A 1995 ban on lead solder in food cans? How about the 2008 to 2011 regulations limiting exposure through children's products? Are these useless endeavors? I don't think so. The reality is every step of prevention creates an extreme drop in average lead blood levels. In 1971, there was an average of 18 micrograms of lead per deciliter of blood, whereas now, it's just barely over one microgram. I'm willing to bet those who benefit from the profits of lead products probably pose the very same talking points that Paul Vigenos and his sports club lobbyists have been regurgitating to the public. Now, in the face of annual flooding and drinking water advisories, as Ridgewood receives an award for its construction of PFAS treatment plants, please don't let yourself be drawn into this manufactured sports culture war by clubs that prioritize profits over safety. Thank you.
Good evening. Amy McCambridge, I stand before you tonight, not just as a resident of Ridgewood, but as a parent, a professional soccer trainer in Ridgewood for 17 years, and a veteran. As a young Marine, I learned firsthand how chemical and biological agents impact the human body, how invisible poisons destroy lives, devastate families, and leave communities completely broken. This is not a debate about sports versus nature. This is about life itself. It's about health, it's about safety, and it's about trust. Right now, Ridgewood has three artificial fields, each filled with PFAS, forever chemicals that poison our soil, flood into our rivers, and contaminate the water that we drink. These chemicals don't degrade, they don't disappear, they accumulate in our bodies, in our children's bodies, and in the land and water that sustain us. The science is clear. Studies from Mount Sinai and other leading institutions spell out the dangers. PFAS causes cancer. Boston has banned turf fields altogether because they refuse to gamble with their residents' lives. Yet here in Ridgewood, you look the other way. You ignore the signs, you ignore the warnings, and you gamble with our children's future. How do you justify this? How do you reconcile the fact that you guys are suing DuPont and 3M for contaminating our water with PFAS when in fact you are dumping the same ingredient, PFAS, back into our rivers and soil through these turf fields? It's hypocrisy at the highest order. It's reckless. But it's not just the chemicals we're fighting against. With every tree you cut down and every patch of grass you replace with artificial turf, you steal from our kids. You steal the shade where they play, the air that they breathe, and the land that they are meant to inherit. You may not see the destruction today, but our children and our grandchildren will see it. They will pay the price for your indifference, and they will suffer because you choose convenience over courage. And for what? For one more hollow accomplishment? This land is not yours to do what you please with. It belongs to all of us and to the generations yet unborn. You will not be the ones to live with the poisoned water, the dead soil, and the devastation left behind. The burden will fall on our children and our grandchildren. I have seen the costs of inaction. It is written in the faces of the dying and the tears of mothers who bury their children and in the silent grief of communities betrayed by those withholding the truth. And I'm here to tell you the truth. The choices you're making right now are not just short-sighted. They are dangerous and unforgivable. And where are the leaders supposed to protect us? Where is the Board of Education, whose sacred duty is to safeguard our children? And our mayor, you once stood as a champion for environmental justice. I'll tell you where. They're here, but they're silent. What keeps you quiet? Is it convenience, complacency, or is it something worse? A choice to gamble with our health, our environment, and our children's futures for the sake of appearance and profit? You owe this community answers. Because right now, your silence is a betrayal, a betrayal of the children who trust you, a betrayal to all the families who believed in you, and a betrayal of the very land and water that sustains us all. So I ask you, when the next generation looks back at this moment in time, what will they say about you as leaders? Will they remember you as leaders who stood for truth, for life, and for their future with full transparency? Or will they curse your names, knowing you were the ones that failed them? Make no mistake, you guys worked for us. And if you choose silence again, we will not forget. Because if you won't fight for the kids in the community, we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close public comment. Would anyone like... Nope, I have no one online. Would anyone like to respond?
I do. I appreciate your tenacity, and I completely agree with you.
So I wanna say something. I'm gonna make a joke.
I'm going to make a joke first. Thank you for your public opinion. I've never been accused of being silent before. I really appreciate the advocacy. And I'm just going to add some information. I did tell you, Amy, if you want to email me, if you guys want to meet and get together. I don't want to belabor the Shedler turf debate, but there's some high-level things. First of all, the village currently uses a different turf than the Board of Ed. So the Board of Ed uses field turf, and we use a vendor named Shaw. We are using a different fill. So we're different bodies, and there's different differences within that. That being said, with Cynthia to start with, not all the trees are coming down at Shedler. The plan from the original purchase has always been, let's pretend it's a grass field. Trees were always highlighted to come down, and there's a significant amount of invasive trees, and we will deal with them separately. An invasive tree can become hazardous. The worst example is like an ash tree. So we are taking trees down, but we are doing a significant, significant replant. And we understand that. But that was the plan from the beginning to the end. It was purchased with full consent and public money to be a park with a field, and trees were always coming down. And the replant, this council bona fide it and made it even higher. Additionally, the trees that are there, we've spent significantly. The sugar maple, we've spent over $6,500 making sure that that tree at the end of its life is maintained and healthy. So I just, not all the trees are coming down. It's not that way. And this council, while we have the turf thing, which I'll get to, the plan was always to remove it, always to have a playing field, and that was what caused the public to support the purchase of the property. Additionally, PFAS isn't just, this is more for the public. It's not one thing. It's not, not all PFASs are equal. There's 5,000 different versions, and we are sensitive to PFAS for a myriad of reasons. We are meeting and partnering and sourcing trying with PFAS-friendly turf. It's not happening. We've met with three or four of them. We're looking to minimize some of the fill. We've had the samples here. So we are aware of it. In addition, a lot of the studies that are highlighted is crumb rubber. We're not using crumb rubber. That's never been an option for us. It's not ever been in this council or any other council's plan. And the expert that did reach out to us, Sarah Evans, when we reached back out to her, we were unresponded to. So I don't want to like, you know, hold, wait, hold on one second.
No, no, excuse me.
This is what I was going to say. I do want to, do want to have more of a back and forth. I am, you know, I voted yes for the turf. I believe that that's a good solution. I believe there are issues with, twice a year, we shut these fields down and sprayed them with lots of, lots of chemicals. Grass and turf have an equitable, where people can't go on it for 24 hours. So there is a discussion. I'm available, but we are trying to pump as much information out there as possible. And I really want to be defensive of this council about being silent, but I also want to be mindful, every meeting, I can't go back and go over the same amount of detail. So if you want to email me, we can get together, that's fine, to say that we haven't contacted the professionals. Sarah Evans never wrote us back. I don't know if you had any success with her, Pam?
Not yet.
We are, we are reading and taking everything, and, you know, that's what we're doing. So I just wanted to add those points. I'm trying to see if I mentioned anything. And I just want to say, you know, it is, we are listening. It's just at the end of the day, factoring all that in, I am still the proponent of the turf at Shedler. And I know that's not favorable, but that's why I also feel that there's, the Board of Ed, there's looking in town, other areas on the Board of Ed, they're looking at turfing as well and expanding their turf profile. So this isn't just a council issue, it's a community issue. But if you want to email me, we can get together, and we can hash out some of the details. I just think this is not crumb rubber. There's very many versions of PFAS. And when we speak in absolute statements like, "All the trees are coming down," that's just not true.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Now, I don't have my notes in front of me, so I'm doing this from memory, but the report that the EPA, which is, that's the federal agency that's governed to look after our health, did a report that was, it was a multi-part report done over multiple years. The most recent one was done in April of '24. And in that, they had four conclusions, which they highlight, where they basically compared people that played on turf to people that played on grass, and they also did comparisons of people to the general population. And in all those cases, all the hard metals and stuff that you quoted, and lead and all that, they was not detectable in the people that played on it. They, they looked at both the air quality, they tested the people's urine and blood, and it wasn't there. So when I say "safe," and I went back and looked, Cynthia, and in one place in the report, it does say, use the word "safe." In the other parts, because of how a scientific report is written, it won't use the word "safe," but it says it's comparable to the general population. So that means either the entire general population is not safe, or it is safe. And so when I use the word "safe" to say it is, is I'm comparing it to that. Additionally, the report also looks at other primary reports and quotes them from other agencies around the world. And to me, what was significant is how many of the European things that's similar to our EPA say similar things, that there's no problem playing on turf. And if it's repeated again and again and again, and most recently, too, I don't know the date of the magazine, but the one that goes out for our National Parks and Recreation also references the same survey that I'm referring to and says, "This shows that it's safe to use artificial turf." And the other thing that I want to say is to say, to be like, "Oh, if we had this pristine forest, it would be good." But you're not looking at what grass fields also encounter, of how many herbicides and pesticides are used, and the dangers that have been established. I mean, Monsanto, as you mentioned, is also horrible with Roundup and all that stuff. That's what goes on fields. And the thing is, is that grass as a playing field is not grass in a meadow. And so what's important as well is that the consultant that this village hired quotes a study of that grass use at 1,000 hours per year, that, and this is available in the appendix of the application for the field that went to Shippensburg. And then what it says is that 1,000 hours of usage a year, the grass actually becomes dangerous because the grass is wiped out and it gets pitted. So it's, when you want to have a grass field, you have to limit its use. We're not in an opportunity to do that because, as Siobhan said, that you'd have to rotate the fields. And I just, what I really want to emphasize is, in my mind, that taking liquid chemicals, pouring it on a grass field, is going to soak into the ground and potentially cause more issues than the artificial turf. And so what the EPA did look at is all the tire crumb and all that nasty stuff that we're not going to use. But I think it's important that they say that. Now, Pam's going to say, but that didn't address PFAS. And the only study that I've been able to find so far, ironically, is from Sweden, and I can bring in that article, but it looked at 10 artificial turf fields around Stockholm. And the thing that I think that is significant in that study is it said that they don't see any detectable, it doesn't impact human health because they had no detectable leaching of the PFAS from the artificial turf. And I'm quoting that, so I don't want to say that that's specifically what it said, but that's my recollection. And with that, I will now say, I'm done.
I have to disagree. The EPA report says in its introduction, "This is not a risk assessment." That's what Report 2 says. They are not concluding that it's safe. It was limited to crumb rubber, which we are not going to use in Bridgewood. Nobody has studied the alternatives except for the manufacturers. So we don't know what they're going to bring. The sample size that the EPA used is ludicrous. It was such a small sample size. And the, the idea that we would open up our athletes and children to PFAS, which, by the way, we may soon have to regulate in our sewage, in our discharge, this is something that doesn't break down like the things that you pour on grass, like lime and fertilizer. Those things break down quickly, not PFAS. And what, what the report also never addressed was the effect on the environment. It's undeniable that, that artificial turf creates a heat island. And by the way, children are much more susceptible to heat, to heat stroke than adults because they don't sweat. And, and kids are closer to the ground so that when the VOCs come out of this fake field, they're, they're the ones breathing them in. The particulate matter, the PM 2.5 that comes out of these fields, is particularly bad for people who have asthma or any other kind of respiratory problems. The list goes on and on about the potential risks that these fields pose, and I just can't countenance approving it.
Pam, just one quick thing. Though I'm referring to Part III, not Part II of the report. Part III is what came out in April. And just if you're, I will argue that little kids do sweat, and next time my daughter is out playing, I'll send her over to your house and you can see.
And I know Evan had something to say, so.
Yeah, thanks so much. I mean, listen, I came here two years ago, new to the issue, and I sat down and I talked to my friends in the Shedler community, I talked to Pam, I talked to folks on the other side of the issue. Listen, I came out that a lot of the dangers that you're suggesting are fact, were inconclusive. You know, we can go back and forth on the EPA report, but the federal government is taking no action to ban turf. I'm not aware of any state level in New Jersey or elsewhere to ban turf. And candidly, I mean, I looked at this issue not just as a councilwoman, but as a parent. I was actually late tonight to our closed-door session because I was dropping my 12-year-old son off at soccer practice on a turf field. So some of the more pointed language I did take exception with tonight that we're being hypocritical, I'm not being hypocritical. You may disagree with me, but I'm not being hypocritical. Similarly, you know, this idea of deaf ears. I listened to my Shedler friends, I listened and read as much as I could on this topic. It's not deaf ears, we just disagree. This is an issue that reasonable people can disagree on, as again, there's no broad prohibition, no conclusive studies that I've seen across the board on this issue that has changed my mind, that says that somehow we should be able to, or we should ban turf. There is danger from having kids not out on fields, and anybody who has kids in this town knows what happens when we have a rainstorm. Sports are canceled for the next week or two, and then when you go back, the fields are like the surface of the moon because they're cratered, because people tried to play anyway. So I continue to support turf. I continue to support those on the other side of this issue, and I'll continue to use language that I think is respectful to both sides, because I do think reasonable people like my friend Pam, my friend Frank can disagree on these issues.
Thanks, everyone. I'm sorry, your name was, was it Killian?
Gillian.
Gillian, I'm so sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear it. So I just want to clarify one point that you made. I have never said that any of these chemicals should be exempt from regulation, ever. Not lead, not PFAS. And just for further clarity, my last name is pronounced Vagianos, so. And that's all I really have to say on the subject. So with that, we can now move on, and, and we will go to our affordable housing consultant, Beth McManus.
Okay. Thank you very much, folks. As you said, the game, I mean, back.
Beth, if you could turn the microphone on and speak in the microphone. Yeah, because we can hear you, but the people on television, there are people on television listening.
Yeah, would you prefer handheld? Would you be more comfortable with a handheld?
No, not really.
Great.
Then you have to be really close, be prepared to hold on to the microphone.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So folks, thank you very much. My name is Beth McManus. I'm the village's affordable housing planner, and tonight I want to give a brief presentation about the fourth round of affordable housing, which is starting right now. Essentially, I would say it probably started on the first of this year. And so there are, there's really one action that I'd like the village to consider for this month, and then we can talk about some next steps in the future.
Technology in action.
Sorry, it's working. Can you give me a, Gabriella?
Were you able to get, yeah, Gabriella, could you just manually push a button or something?
Gabriella will take care of it.
For the record, she did remind me to turn on the remote. I forgot, so.
See, she went to school for a long time. She knows these things.
Okay. So first, briefly, you know, I'm here to talk about affordable housing, but just so folks are clear, why are we talking about affordable housing? In New Jersey, it's because we have a constitutional obligation. It goes back to case law back in 1975 that requires municipalities to create opportunities for affordable housing. There's been a lot of case law rules and laws adopted since then, but that's when all of this started. The big reason why municipalities engage in the process, because it is technically voluntary, is because you want protection from builder's remedy litigation, which essentially is when municipalities are sued for not providing their affordable housing obligation. It's a very strong tool that developers can use to undermine the municipality zoning and to essentially get approval for larger, denser buildings that are otherwise permitted. And so going through this process protects you from that. And when we talk about affordable housing, what are we, what am I talking about? In New Jersey, it's really two types of affordable housing, the, two types of obligations. And you'll hear me go into more detail later. The first one is a rehabilitation obligation, and that is essentially an estimate of substandard units in the municipality occupied by low and moderate income households. It's calculated based on census data and American Community Survey data for each municipality in the state. That's one type of an obligation. The other one is a new construction obligation or a round. So you might hear things like, and I'm going to say it many times, the third round obligation, the fourth round obligation. That's that new construction obligation. And really, when you, when, if you're reading articles in the state about affordable housing, that's the, that's the number that people are referring to, the round or the fourth round. And that is, it's, it's very, at its most basic level, it's defined as the number of new affordable units that must be created in municipality in order to be compliant. That said, it's really much more complicated than that because there are bonus credits and adjustments, et cetera. But at its most basic level, that's what the round or the new construction obligation is. It's new affordable housing units to be created, while the rehabilitation obligation addresses what already exists in the town. And so in order to participate in this process and to get that protection from builder's remedy litigation, what that means now in 2025, because we're responding to a new Fair Housing Act, is, what that means is, first, the municipality simply needs to declare its participation in the process. And that's ultimately, that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. And you do that through declaring your affordable housing obligation via a resolution by the end of this month. After you do that, the next steps, very broadly, are to adopt a housing plan that addresses that obligation and to submit the supporting documents that help to implement or fulfill the terms of your housing plan. And so that's, that's really, it's, it's broken down into two very basic tasks, which is to declare your obligation and your participation, and then to submit a housing plan later in the year. And so for this overview, as I said briefly, we're responding to a new Fair Housing Act in New Jersey, but more specifically, the Housing Act was amended, and it created this new judicial oversight program for affordable housing, referred to as the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. For those of you that might be familiar with COA or the Council on Affordable Housing, the Fair Housing Act eliminated COA. It closed the Council on Affordable Housing and essentially replaced it with this judicial program, the program, as folks are referring to it. So COA is no more, and now we're working through the program. As I also said, the first step is for the village to adopt a resolution prior to the end of this month, for the governing body to adopt a resolution. For those of you that might be familiar with COA or the Council on Affordable Housing, uh, the Fair Housing Act eliminated COA, it closed the Council on Affordable Housing, and essentially replaced it with this judicial program, the program, as folks are referring to it. So COA is no more, and now we're working through the program. As I also said, the first step is for the village to adopt a resolution prior to the end of this month, for the governing body to adopt a resolution that sets forth your fourth round affordable housing obligation. And that, and that means your fourth round, that new construction, also means your rehabilitation obligation, and I'll talk to folk, I'll talk to you about that in a bit. Once we submit that obligation or that resolution to the program, there's a process for folks to object to it, uh, that is spelled out in the act. But ultimately, if there is no objection to our obligation, uh, it becomes, uh, it is applied the day after that objection period or on March 1st. If there is an objection, then there's a month-long period for the village to work with the program and the objector to determine what the affordable housing obligation is. I can't give much detail on how that's going to go because this is a new process, but that, but that is, there's, that is the framework laid out in the bill. But most importantly, uh, what I'd, what I would propose folks focus on is this resolution that's due by the end of the month, declaring the affordable housing obligation. Know that there is this objection process that may be relevant, depending on what happens. But then the next major milestone, very simply, is to submit and adopt a housing plan. Now, I'm going to be back here before the governing body and before the planning board multiple times between now and when that housing plan gets submitted. And so the content of that plan, how we're going to address our affordable housing obligation, these are critical questions, but they're just not for this point in time. They're for once we know what our affordable housing obligation is. So let's stick a pin in that and focus on that in, in spring and, uh, in early summer of this year. So as I said, with the affordable housing obligation, there's two broad categories. The first one is the rehabilitation obligation. Essentially, uh, as I said before, estimate of low mod income households, um, in substandard or overcrowded units, and that is newly calculated for our round from 2025 to 2035. And then the second type of affordable housing obligations are these, uh, these new construction or these rounds. Now, the previous rounds, the prior round and the third round, as it's referred to from 1987 through 19, or excuse me, 2025, they've already been calculated, and they're already addressed and satisfied through the village's housing plan documents. And it was 229 for the prior round and 664 for the third round, for a total of 893. And those obligations have been satisfied. For the fourth round, that also is newly calculated, and I would say that's the, that's the most important part of the resolution that's going to be adopted. Now, as I, I've started to allude to, one thing I want to be clear about, because the village's numbers are, are so very large, but notwithstanding that, the village has, has been compliance, uh, started its compliance in 1990 and remains compliant today. And I want to highlight that because, uh, I think that starts to illustrate that even though our affordable housing obligation is quite large, that's okay, because the rules anticip, the rules that, that we, that we use to meet our obligation anticipate this scenario and provide accommodations for built-out municipalities that frankly, Ridgewood has taken advantage of in the past, and we're going to continue to do so in the future. So, all of that background aside, let's talk about the task at hand, and that is adopting a resolution by the end of this month that does, uh, first, declares your participation in the, in the fourth round process, says you want to participate, you want to be protected from builder's remedy litigation. And two, uh, expressing or declaring your affordable housing obligation. Now, this is not an obligation that the village needs to start, uh, calculating from scratch, if you will. Instead, the Department of Community Affairs has put together a calculation for every single municipality in the state. Now, it is non-binding. It is required that municipalities evaluate the DCA's work and, uh, correct it if necessary. And it, and I do have some corrections that I, I think the village should account for in its resolution. That said, I, I do want to be clear that our latitude with changing the affordable housing obligation is somewhat limited. We have to be consistent with what's outlined in the Fair Housing Act. We can't just simply say, uh, we think it should be two units without basis, for example. So let's start with the rehabilitation obligation. First, DCA calculated it to be four units, um, and that is based upon data set forth by, uh, Census, American Community Survey. And these data sources, in the manner in which the number is calculated, are really subject to minimal interpretation. It's very, it's pretty, it's clear as to how, uh, DCA conducted the number, it's clear, or conducted the calculation, it's clear what data sources they used. And quite frankly, I don't have any, any corrections to it. I don't have any alternative ideas for how they should have calculated that number.
Beth, that's not calc, it's not based on an examination of any of the buildings in our, in our town?
Correct. Nobody came to Ridgewood to, uh.
It's hypothetical.
Correct. It's based entirely on, on these federally available data sources.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and, and I will say, in addition, if there was a correction to the data, I think there's going to be very limited impact, given the small obligation of four units. And so as I said earlier, I recommend that the village accept this rehab obligation of four units and simply cite the DCA's report for it. For the new construction obligation, for that fourth round obligation, DCA calculated 427 units. And I've gone through all of their data sources, and I do find that there's an opportunity to correct that number from 427 to 394. And all of those corrections are based upon what's referred to as the land capacity factor, and that is DCA's efforts to identify developable land in the municipality. And they did so using a variety of, of data sources. I think that they did so generally consistent with the Fair Housing Act, but, but that they, uh, failed to account for certain conditions, uh, in this municipality and, and across the state as well, but our focus here is on what they failed to account for in Ridgewood. And that is essentially that they have identified lands as being developable, which I think, frankly, are not developable. And they include, uh, properties, uh, that equal about seven acres in the community, which doesn't sound like a lot. However, it's seven of eight acres that they identified as being developable. I think, I, I recommend that the vill, the village indicate in its, uh, resolution to the state are indeed not developable. And those, uh, eliminated properties fall into really three categories. The first is that the land that's identified as developable is within the floodway or the flood hazard area, or the special, the special flood hazard area, also known as the 100-year flood plain. So those, those lands and those properties were identified as developable. I recommend they be eliminated. The second category are, uh, lands, and I should say pieces of properties, that are really used as buffers. And you're going to see an example of this in the following slide for land surrounding the park and ride. So this is property which is literally undeveloped, however, it is not available for further development because of its current use and configuration. And then the third category is land that is really just too narrow to be developed for affordable housing, or really for any building type of, of any intensity, aside from perhaps a utility building or perhaps one single-family home. So these are lots that don't have the configuration and/or the area to really support any amount of measurable developments. And on this slide, you can see examples of each of those three categories. The property shown on the left, the left picture, that is actually the village's firehouse on East Glen, and it, the legend, I'm sure is a bit hard to read, but the area in, uh, in blue, for example, is the flood hazard area. And so as you can see, it's the entire property. Uh, we also have land that is within the floodway. That's one example of land for those reasons I recommend be eliminated. The image in the middle is a strip of property owned by the village, but between the elementary school and single-family homes. That property is, uh, I recommend be eliminated because its configuration is simply, uh, inadequate to host affordable housing or any type of, uh, development of significance. In addition, its location between the, the sports fields and the single-family homes also serve as a buffer between that active recreation area and the single-family homes. So for those reasons, I think that property and, and others similar to it should be eliminated. And then the property on the right is what I had cited before. These are, uh, pieces of the wooded buffer surrounding the park and ride property that I think are also not available for further development and al, and also are already serving an existing purpose, which is, as I said, to simply be a buffer between the active park and ride lot and the single-family homes, uh, that surround the site, located to the, to the west, or the, uh, the woodlands that are serving as a buffer to the adjacent commercial use located to the east. And so these are three examples that I think illustrate all of the, all of, uh, examples of all the reasons why I'm recommending those seven of eight, or I specifically, uh, reducing the developable land from 8.15 acres down to one acre should be reflected in the village's resolution, which leads to the reduced affordable housing obligation down to 394. Now, as I said before, uh, the village's obligation is really quite large, and, and that's okay in, from the perspective of there are, uh, rules that simply anticipate this scenario, and we've gone through this in the past, uh, this being a vacant land adjustment. So for example, your third round plan that was adopted in 2020 cited a prior round and a third round obligation of 893 units, and that was adjusted down to 55 units. And more specifically, it's adjusted down to a 55-unit RDP, realistic development potential, which has a certain set of, uh, requirements, requirements that the village must satisfy that obligation. The remaining obligation, the mathematical difference, is subject to a much lower requirement in the sense that the village looks to, uh, adopt, for example, overlay zoning where, where appropriate, but there's no one-for-one accounting for the unmet need. And so that's how the third round plan was structured, again, 893 down to 55, and I would expect the exact same scenario to apply to your fourth round. We're going to take that, uh, 394, for example, the obligation that, that I'm recommending, and that will be adjusted down, uh, to a, a figure that reflects what is actually vacant and developable. That said, I want to say that the vacant land process is very different than the process we're talking about this evening about the land capacity factor.
And Beth, what is your recommendation for the council this evening?
This evening, what I'd like to recommend is that the council consider, uh, consider the, the data in the presentation, which indicates that there are properties identified as developable that I recommend, uh, do not, that the village push back upon in its resolution state, seven of, uh, of these eight acres are undevelopable and are, as a result, our obligation is reduced from that which DCA calculated, reduced from 427 down to 394.
And just to be clear, um, for the folks who may not have had the benefit of some of the pre-reading, that I know we all did, by agreeing that our obligation is 394, we're not agreeing to facilitate the building of 394 units, we're merely using that as a starting point for what the statute requires, and then most subsequently be submitting a plan as to what we think is feasible, given the fact that Ridgewood is a heavily developed municipality already. Because clearly, I don't know where you'd even shoehorn that many in, you know, or even a fraction of that, but that's the next phase, and that's not what we're approving tonight. We're just approving this, uh, we would push forward saying, this is what is calculated under the statute, now let's talk about what's realistic after that.
That's exactly it. This is just the total obligation. The adjustment is specifically intended to be a later step that will be conducted in, really, as soon as our obligation is confirmed, uh, by DCA. And, and then we'll talk about that as part of the housing plan, which must be adopted by June 30th of this year. So that adjustment process, how we're going to meet the obligation, is not intended to be, uh, addressed in this resolution. Instead, that's part of the second phase of this.
So you're going to come back before June.
Yes.
And discuss with us, uh, in the same way you discussed with prior council, how that our, the number 394 is equivalent to that 893 number, correct?
Correct.
That was ultimately reduced to 55, and you will come back to us with a recommendation before June on how and if and what number that 394 may be reduced to. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes. I'll come back to talk to you about not only how is the adjustment, uh, what the number is adjusted down to, but, and then importantly, how are we going to satisfy it? And that's, and that's really where the, I would say, the policymaking starts. This process we're in now is, is quite technical, but the next step is policymaking and decision-making as to, uh, development decisions in Ridgewood.
Great. Questions?
Mayor, I just think it's important, especially so that this is not, this information that Beth has supplied the village tonight, first in closed session to the council and then to the public, so that it's not misinterpreted, misreported, or misunderstood. We had a number that was developed by the state of New Jersey of the 427, based on your initial criteria, based on the land capacity factor. In your professional opinion, that number's going to be reduced to 394. Now, we're going to pass a resolution, presumably on January 29th, so that you can meet the deadline that that resolution gets submitted to the state. It's going to outline how you got to that 394 number. And then from there, the work of your firm is going to commence to further reduce that number down to the realistic development potential. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, the only cor, because the, the language that I would recommend is, we're correcting the DCA number from 427 to 394.
394.
And then we're going to adjust what, I hope, is 394 down to an RDP and an unmet need.
Based on what's realistically developable in the village.
Correct. Yes. What we're doing now is a correction. What we're doing later is an adjustment, which are, they're very technical terms, and I'm sorry for that, but just in terms of making clear the record, uh, I just want to put those, those are the correct verbs to use, essentially.
Right. So 394 is not our realistic development number moving forward.
Correct.
And I just want the public to know that, so it's not misrepresented or misunderstood.
And thank you. I know, Keith, I think now you said it, I've said it, you've said it, because I do want to make sure, because this is not intuitive, that it's crystal clear that we're agreeing to what the statute says, but then the real work starts after this to figure out what's actually feasible and what's not. So thank you for repeating it, but I do agree that there's a lot of room here for the public to get some misinformation, and I want to make sure that they, they don't do that.
And, and just in terms of historical demonstration, the last third round was 893, and the achievable was 55.
Correct.
So, and that's, that's a significant delta between those two.
Absolutely. And I, I can't speak to the, the scale specifically, but I think the, that the fourth round is going to be similar to the third round in that respect.
And just one last thing, I think everybody knows, is that we are mandated by the process at this point in time to, as Beth said, to agree to participate in the fourth round to determine what our RDP is going to be. And that's basically what we're going to say in the resolution.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you very much.
Beth, thank you so much. Always appreciate your guidance on this issue, which is fraught with interesting possibilities.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Great.
Good night.
And let's move on. Let's go to our regular agenda. Keith, take it.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll try to be brief tonight, acknowledging that we do have a, a lengthy agenda, but I do want to start by congratulating you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Perrin, um, now Councilman Mortimer, and Councilman Whitez on his appointment as Speaker, uh, President pro temp, um, at the reorganization meeting Monday night. It was one of the few times I didn't get to speak, so I'm sure the public was thrilled about that.
Must have been killing you, Keith.
But, uh, and I know that Councilman Whitez was especially excited about my lack of speaking part on Monday, but I do want to just congratulate you publicly. Look forward to another year of productivity and success here in the village of Ridgewood.
Thank you very much, Keith.
Speaking of that productivity, uh, very pleased to report that the process has begun to demolition the town garage on Franklin Street. Uh, they've been working out there for the last few days. I assume it'll take approximately, um, to the middle of next week for the building to be completely razed. Uh, we will then, uh, work with the LSRPs to talk about next steps, um, and we will have, um, once they are cleared out of there, uh, we will have some village staff doing some cleanup on the property as well, uh, to make it as aesthetically pleasing as the environmental testing commences. Um, I do want to mention that, um, Central Dispatch has received a grant. Um, there, the grant is going to cover the yearly service cost for maintenance and upkeep to the Central Square 911 system. Um, it's also going to purchase new upgraded equipment, uh, so that we are in compliance... to demolition the town garage on Franklin Street. They've been working out there for the last few days. I assume it'll take approximately to the middle of next week for the building to be completely razed. We will then work with the LSRPs to talk about next steps, and we will have, once they are cleared out of there, we will have some village staff doing some cleanup on the property as well to make it as aesthetically pleasing as the environmental testing commences. I do want to mention that Central Dispatch has received a grant. There, the grant is going to cover the yearly service cost for maintenance and upkeep to the Central Square 911 system. It's also going to purchase new upgraded equipment so that we are in compliance with the state's next-generation 911 platform. We're going to be transitioning to that in the spring of 2025. And the technology that's associated with the purchase of this new system will allow for location-based routing, which will actually be able to identify which side of the house in a single-family home someone is in if they call 911, and which desk someone is calling from in a more office-type of environment. So the technology is going to be extensive, and the grant that they've received is going to pay for the lion's share of this new technology over at Central Dispatch. So I want to thank Director Palmeroy and his staff there for their advocacy in soliciting this grant. Some good news this morning, the village conducted their bond sale offering in the amount of $27,212,000 in general obligation bonds, which consisted of over $15 million in general improvement, over $11 million in water utility bonds, and $418,000 in parking utility bonds. We had 11 participants in the bond sale, offering a net interest cost to the village between 3.141% and 3.213%. The successful bidder was Robert W. Baird and Company out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, offering price of $28,542,453, resulting in effective interest rate of 3.141%. By comparison, our 2023 bond sale came out to a rate, an interest rate of 3.166. So we are more competitive than we were in our last bond sale back in 2023. Also pleased to report that on December 20th, the remediation effort at Haber-Nichol Park for that small area near the playground, it was about a five-foot-by-five-foot area that had tested positive for an arsenical compound, was remediated through the assistance of Matrix New World Engineering. The site was excavated, the soil was taken to a depository that accepts those types of soils, and we are in the process now of closing out the paperwork in that case with the NJDEP. And we anticipate that within the next 45 to 60 days, that will be accomplished and we'll be able to take down the remediation signage that's up there at Haber-Nichol Park. Last week, the Veterans Field Lighting Project commenced right behind Village Hall here. We already started to put in the footings for the lights, and the light poles have been delivered, so you'll see them laying out there on Veterans Field. And we're looking forward to having this project done, complete, and operational by the start of the spring season for our sports teams. On tonight's agenda, the council will be discussing the updates to the tree ordinance in addition to the requested bus stop shelter near Ridgewood High School. So glad we're moving forward on those two initiatives as well. And finally, just a few announcements, the village is selling our annual parking permits in the lobby of Village Hall. Please remember to bring your driver's license and a copy of your registration for the cars which, in which you wish to purchase a permit for. We cannot issue the permits without those required documents. Christmas tree pickup has commenced Tuesday on the east side and Thursday on the west side from January 2nd to January 31st. Wreaths and garlands will be collected with regular garbage. You may also drop off your Christmas tree in the section of the Grayden Park, the Grayden Pool Lot designated for Christmas trees. The Ridgewood Chamber of Commerce Restaurant Week starts on Sunday, January 12th, and runs through Thursday, the 16th. Also commences the following week from January 19th to the 23rd. Great way to enjoy a delicious meal at a reduced price while supporting Ridgewood businesses. The village will be closed on Monday, January 20th, for Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. The recycling center will be, also be closed that day, and there'll be no curbside bulk pickup that week. Reminder about snow removal, all sidewalks in residential districts, snow must be removed within 24 hours of the snow falling. And if it is snowing when you leave your home in the morning, our sanitation and recycling folks are asking you to please put your garbage cans at the end of your driveway until you have a clear path to them. We appreciate your cooperation in keeping all of our village employees safe. And finally, upcoming council meetings, January 15th is our public meeting, January 29th is our work session, both begin at 7:30 PM. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith, and let's go to council reports. Siobhan?
Sure. So I was not here Monday, so congratulations to the newbie, Frank. Like you as an end cap over there. And of course, welcome back, and it's very exciting, and to Evan and your continued role. I'm going to have a private conversation with Lorraine, who I believe is already taking a vacation next week, but congratulations, and it's lovely, and so excited for the next two to four years, however that works out. So I have a couple of updates. One, next week on Tuesday, January 14th, the Ridgewood Public Library will be hosting a movie called Patrice, and I'm going to be quick, but within the disabilities community, it's incredibly hard to navigate a marriage, and so when two special needs people want to become married, their entitlements from the state, based upon their classification, become affected. And the library, and this is happening a lot within our young adult special needs community, so there'll be a speaker, and Paula Aronson's going to be there, Diana Stoffeld and a couple, her boyfriend's name is Matt. It's hosted by Access. If anybody has, would like to be there, it's going to be wonderful. It's at 6:30 on January 14th. Additionally, everyone will be in the community receiving the details of the Martin Luther King Committee. It's a full weekend. I am a prior member, I'm very proud of what the committee's done. There's a series of events, it'll be posted on social media, and I want to thank the MLK Committee and Jan Phillips for letting us know about this. If you could attend any or all events, it's a lovely weekend, and there's something for everybody. And that is obviously Martin Luther King Weekend, which is, begins Friday, January 17th. I wanted to briefly take a minute and thank and congratulate Heather. Evan and I both had on our campaign agendas communications, and while we've done a lot on social and video, old-school minutes are very meaningful, and I know Heather in the clerk's office worked really hard to encapsulate chatters like me, who make the minutes even longer. Evan got away, he got off easy. So the minutes are complete and they're up to date. These are housekeeping issues, but they're really diligent, and I just want to say thank you and congratulations to the clerk. I'm so excited that we're finishing and starting 2025. Yesterday morning, the Fields Committee met, and I want to congratulate Mary Lou Handy, who is the new rep from the field side. It was a wonderful meeting, and we discussed many things, including the lighting project and some initiatives, including that the Board of Ed has hired an architectural firm to begin looking at the feasibility of whether or not BF can be a full-size regulation to her field. So that was very exciting. We also heard from Rasa, who is still very much willing, ready to be recognized as adult members of the field's policy. So I want to thank them for attending, and of course, Nancy and Keith Cook. Lot of activities going on, and girls' flag football continues to expand at such a rapid rate, so, you know, we continue to see more and more constraints for recreation across the board. I too want to briefly say goodbye to one of the longest lingering issues in Ridgewood. I believe the garage became an issue when I was a high school senior, which is kind of bananas, because I'm very far away from that. And I want to thank everybody, including Pam and Open Space, who attended, Mr. Bossler, who's been, I think, on Open Space since the inception. We had a crew there, we watched it, it was freezing, and I want to thank everybody, including engineering, water, and all the people who issued the permits. It's, it's really exciting to see that important corner breathe, and if you get a chance to drive by and begin to use your imaginations as to what you think it should be. And lastly, I just want to be brief, because I did watch and receive several calls about a statement made on Monday night. Prior to serving on this village council, I was a member of One Village, One Vote, and this is repeatedly comes up in conversation. I'm extremely proud of the effort of which I was one of five people, and I just want to reiterate for the record, One Village, One Vote's primary purpose was to address three things within our village. Increase voter turnout, improve school safety by reducing foot traffic, and save money to the taxpayers. It prevailed, I'm incredibly proud of it. It is not just mine, so when things are said about it, it belongs to four others, myself, and I'm very grateful to them. All members of that petition committee served this village, and all of them did a great thing, and, and the public was asked a very important question, and it prevailed. Additionally, voter turnout's really up. We are now sitting here with the highest female vote getter ever on the village council, highest, that's, that's a big deal, highest male vote getter, and Sheila Brogan on the Board of Ed is the highest vote getter ever in Ridgewood. So I want to, I'm not going to go back and forth when things are said, but I want to be clear, three splintered points on the splintered campaign by five people, all of whom are still serving this village, and I'm just grateful to them and grateful to see voting numbers, and congratulations to the highest vote getters ever.
Thank you, Siobhan. And I'm going to ask Frank, do you have any, I know you haven't met with any committees yet, but I didn't know if you had any report you wanted to give, and don't feel obligated.
I was going to say that my first committee is tomorrow, and that's Open Space, so I'm excited about that.
Excellent.
So that means the next meeting I can report on it. And I too am excited that the village garage got torn down. I was there, and it was cool to watch the claw. I sent Keith way too many pictures of what I looked at. And then today, I was over at TD Bank across the street, and it is already so much nicer to just look across the street and see that gone. So thank you to everyone.
Thanks, Frank. Evan?
Yeah, I will be quick, none of my committees have met since the holidays. Actually, so Siobhan, you did steal my thunder, but I actually might be able to one-up you. So I actually asked Keith to pull the numbers in terms of the number of voters. And listen, I, you know, when, you know, comments were made about, you know, moving the election, I, you know, I'm always open to reevaluating my positions, but in 2018, before you and, and your cohorts got involved, there were less than 5,000 people that voted that year. This year, or I guess last year, there were almost 15,000 people that voted. I firmly believe that the only thing better than democracy is more democracy.
Yeah.
And I find it hard to argue against having more people vote. And so I completely agree with you, Siobhan, and thank you again in your personal capacity and all your cohorts for doing what I think was a tremendous service to the village. In terms of really boring stuff, I do want to bring up, and I, I don't think we brought this up before, but I know you did put this out in a, in a release, Keith, in terms of our AAA bond rating being issued, which I think dovetailed nicely with your comments today about our bond offering. This is probably the most boring thing we talk about, and also amongst the most important things that we can do as, as a village council. The fact that we're paying such little interest in our debt means that we have more money to spend on things that we want to do in the town to better the village as a whole. If you read through the report that granted us our AAA bond reading, they were effusive in their praise of our fiscal management and our fiscal responsibility. Now, you're not going to see any of that stuff, you know, kind of broadcast all over the place, because it is boring, but it is incredibly important to the well-running of this village. And as boring as it is, Keith, I'll tell you, I'm super excited for it. I might be the only one, but I'm incredibly excited. And I really want to congratulate you. I know, you know, Bob isn't here tonight, and him, I thought it was a, a really, really great thing. Finally, I will just go back to one of my earlier comments. Before this election, I was, in fact, the largest vote getter, I believe, in Ridgewood. Now, I could point out that this was an election year with the presidential election that drove up, you know, the voter registration, but again,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyway. But again, I do think it was a really great voter turnout, and again, a really good sign that, that more people are getting involved.
Thanks, Evan. Pam?
Okay. Planning Board met in December, and we considered the Ridgewood Waters application to build a PFOS treatment plant on the east side on Saddle River Road. There are several adjustments that have to be made. The road needs to be widened a little bit to accommodate trucks, and some trees will have to be removed and replanted. There were also questions about stormwater management and how would that go? But we are, the hearing went well, I would say. Let's see. Then also, there was a, an application for a minor subdivision and consolidation of property at 248 Briar Cliff Lane. The board voted on the, on the resolution. I could not vote because I hadn't been there for the presentation, so, but it did pass. And then, Green Ridgewood and the Green Team will meet tomorrow night in the, in the senior lounge downstairs at 7:30. Central Business District Advisory Committee met last month, and we discussed, several of us had gone to the downtown New Jersey Conference in Montclair, and so we were summarizing what happened there for people, and the good ideas that we learned about in terms of affordable housing development, and the interplay between improvement districts and chambers of commerce. We meet tomorrow again at 8:30 in the morning via Zoom, and the, the, the link is on the agenda on the website. Let's see. I wanted to congratulate our firefighters who got the CPR Save a Life Award. There were several of them, and so it's gratifying to see that their work really relates, results in patients' lives being saved. The Special Improvement District Steering Committee continues to meet approximately every other week. We are conducting a feasibility study, and we hope that that will come to fruition soon. I did want to note that downtown, it's not a Ridgewood project, but I saw that PSENG is replacing a lamppost that was knocked down in front of the bus station la, on, in the summer of 2023. And I'm glad to see that going back up. I do urge people to attend the Martin Luther King Day celebrations. I always go to the one at Method, United Methodist Church on Monday morning, 10 to 12, because all, all the interfaith leaders speak, and each one brings a different perspective to whatever the topic is, and it's very thought-provoking and, and moving and worthwhile. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Pam. My committees did not meet over the holidays, but I want to begin by welcoming Frank Mortimer to our merry band here. I, I think that you're going to be an incredible asset. Just your first comments from the dais, whether you agree with them or disagree with them, you can tell that this is a person who is incredibly intelligent, very well reasoned, works very hard researching, and is very well-prepared, and that's so important. And again, I, I don't really care what your positions are, but I do care the way you comport yourself, and you're going to set a new standard for us, and that means more to me than you know. So, so welcome. And, and I do want to take a moment to comment on the fact that I disagree with, Siobhan, that it was you and four people, it was you and four people and a majority of the, of the residents who voted that year to move this election for all of the reasons that you said. So it was, it was, you started the petition, but it was really up to the, to the village. And, and the point that, that Evan brought out, and again, yes, we know that more people vote in a presidential year, but to go from 5,000 to 15,000, you know, you, you said more democracy. Yeah, and I, I have a, I have a saying that, that Pam, my, my English major friend is going to winset, but more democracy is more better. And, and, and I stand by that, because the more people who are voting, and I really don't care how people vote, but I do, I have one personal pet peeve that even in this highly contested presidential year, in this incredibly well-informed community, three out of 10 people did not vote. Three out of 10 registered voters didn't vote. It's unacceptable. But the fact that, that, that One Village, One Vote referendum passed handily, made it so that many more people are voting, and that is always a good thing. So, and with that, let's go to our regular agenda. Keith?
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to call up Director Calby and Lonnie, if you're going to come up too. We have 24 items under Ridgewood Water tonight, so we have a very active agenda when it comes to Ridgewood Water help heading into 2025. So we appreciate your indulgence in trying to get through a lot of these annual contract awards tonight, and we'll start off with that. Hopefully Rich doesn't sit in a broken chair.
And I set it up to. Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening, Rich.
Happy New Year.
And to you.
Joining me tonight is Yolanda McCollum. Yolanda is a environmental engineer on our staff. She's with me tonight because a lot of what's in front of you is her work. She's taken, since she's been with Ridgewood Water, taken it upon herself to take over all our contracts, do the annual bidding and renewals. So before you tonight, for the first time, we have almost everything that we do on annual basis, instead of coming to you piecemeal over the course of the over the course of the year.
Welcome, Lonnie, and thank you for being here tonight. And is it Alana?
Well, Yolanda is my full name, but I go by Lonnie too. I'll answer each.
I just want to say Lonnie was my first hire here, and I did really well with that one.
True story.
Right, Rich?
That's true.
So proud of himself.
So we're going to take turns going through these. Lonnie's going to start with the first one, and we'll go back and forth. And please, any questions along the way?
Okay, so item one is for, most of these are, like Keith said, going to be the annual contracts. A couple are capital improvements, so the first two are capital improvements. Item one is for water service line main-to-curb replacements. This is the contract that supplements our distribution and maintenance crews so that we can keep up with the demand for lead service line replacements on the utility side when initiated by the customer, or to get ahead of paving projects, or when our crews get redirected to other demands. On November 14th, we received five bids and selected the lowest responsible bidder based on unit prices, which was Conquest. The contract will be a not-to-exceed amount of $200,000, and funds will be accounted for in the water utility capital budget.
Questions, anyone? Let's go.
Okay, item two is for the East Side Distribution Water Main Replacement Project. This is sort of phase one of the upcoming PFOS treatment facility at East Side, but this is the non-I-Bank funded portion. We elected to prioritize this water main replacement to align with the raw water main installation that will also be required to transmit water from East Saddle River and Salem Wells to the new PFOS facility. This way, the roads will only need to be resurfaced once, following the water main and the raw water main installations. On December 18th, we received nine bids. Our design consultant, Arcadis, reviewed the bids and recommended award to the lowest responsible bidder, Matina and Son, in the amount of $2,673,000. Funds will be allocated under the water utility capital budget.
Questions? Let's go.
Item three. This is for our annual tree maintenance services contract. On November 14th, we received three bids and have selected the lowest responsible bidder, Almstead Tree and Shrub Care Company, in an amount not to exceed $80,000, and funds will be allocated under the water utility operating budget.
Questions?
I have one here. I'm just curious, what, what is tree maintenance for Ridgewood Water?
So you can answer better than I, but the landscaping, there's two kind of landscaping contracts. One is for general landscaping, one is solely for tree maintenance. And, Rich, I don't know how.
So it, it's a couple services. It's tree trimming when necessary and removal of hazardous or downed trees on the properties within the four municipalities that Ridgewood serves.
Got it. So it's on Ridgewood Water property?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And just to give you an idea, it's pretty low. Our hazardous budget line item that we maintain for the village is about 60,000. So, I was impressed with the idea.
Pam, do you have a comment, a question?
No, I had exactly the same question as Frank had.
Good. All set?
So it doesn't, when you say trimming, do you mean pruning?
Selective pruning based mostly on hazards identified by us or by neighboring properties. You know, a lot of our properties neighbor residential properties.
All set? Keep going.
Our next item is furnishing and delivery of sodium hypochlorite. This is the disinfectant we utilize in the drinking water. This is for award of year two of a contract that was awarded last year for the first time. The amount of $2.84 per gallon, and a not-to-exceed amount of $124,000 for the year, and it is funded through the water utility operating budget.
Questions? Let's go.
Okay, next item is our annual line stop and valve insertion services. This is also year two of a two-year contract. Year one was completed last year. This is an award to Conquest Construction, a not-to-exceed amount of $100,000, and this is also from the water utility operating budget.
Everybody good? Go ahead.
Next is servicing repair of portable water wells and pumping facilities. This is also year two of a two-year contract, recommended award to Williams Stoudoff Company, and not-to-exceed amount of $500,000 for the year, and this is also funded out of the water utility budget.
Everybody good? Let's go.
Okay, item seven is one of the new, new bids we did as for our annual pipe and appurtenances contract. Not new as in new, but, Rich, not a, not a second year. So this is the first year. We received three bids on November 13th, and we award this bid in sections based on the sum of unit prices for that section, as is typical for this contract. So we awarded to all three bidders their sections that they had the low bid on, Capital Supply, Raritan Group, and Ferguson Water Works, for a total not-to-exceed annual amount of $415,000 funded from the water utility operating budget.
Questions? Continue.
Item eight is for the annual infrared asphalt surface repair contract. We received five bids on November 14th and selected the lowest responsible bidder based on unit prices, Atlantic Infrared, for a not-to-exceed contract amount of $175,000 funded with the water utility operating budget also.
Questions?
So I have a strange question, because we get a lot of questions about road surfacing. Do we ever, like, go and look at their roads? Or is that, because it's bidding, that's not necessary?
Go and look at what?
For their repairs?
After they do them?
Or before, you know, to see, like, what's your work product?
Yes. Well, like, for the infrared one, we, our crews went out and marked each one. So, and then they, and then they document the final product.
In other places.
Oh, in other places. Because we get a significant, because the public, I'm sure, we get a significant
amount of complaints about repairs, right? You know, during, and do we do anything with the bidding process to demonstrate that they're, you know?
We vet, I mean, we vet them and make sure that other, like, for instance, Glen Rock was very happy with this company, so we kind of get that information. We do get that feedback.
That's all I want to know.
And look for it, yes.
I just never know in the bidding process if it's just lowest, or if you actually call some of the references.
Yeah, when we say lowest responsible, we do, we do check.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Good question.
Anybody else on that? No? Good. Continue, Lonnie.
Okay. Item nine is for the annual concrete pavement and sidewalk repair contract. We received five bids on November 14th and selected the lowest responsible bidder based on unit prices. Conquest Construction was the low bidder for a total not-to-exceed amount for the contract of $50,000 accounted for in the water utility operating budget.
Questions? Go.
Item 10 is for our annual cold water meters and accessories contract. We received one bid on November 13th from Rio Supply, our current vendor, and selected Rio as the sole responsible bidder for award of year one of a two-year contract in the amount of $223,451.70, with funds being allocated in the water utility operating budget.
Questions? Go ahead.
Item 11 is for the annual asphalt trench repair contract. We previously had this one lumped in with the infrared, but it turned out the contractors that specialized in infrared didn't really do the trench, we need trench repair like in two-hour, you know, windows, and it was a, they weren't compatible as well. So we separated it out, and we got better results. So this is for asphalt trench repair. We received four bids on November 14th and selected the lowest responsible bidder based on unit prices. Conquest Construction, big winner for a total not-to-exceed annual amount of $50,000 with funds being allocated from the water utility operating budget.
Questions?
What's the difference between trench repair and infrared?
So the trench is the, either the base course or the top course of just the asphalt material that, to fill the, what they dug up, and then later on, to get the absolute smoothest sealed surface, they'll come back and infrared it with the, with the heat. So if it's an old road that's going to be resurfaced, we may not require infrared, or we probably won't, but if it's a newer road that has been resurfaced within the last five years, then we'll, they'll designate that spot. If it's only been base paved with the trench repair, then we'll come back and infrared.
Cool, thank you.
Councilman, it creates less of a seam and more of a flat surface, whereas doing trench work is more patchy, let's say.
Go ahead.
Okay, item 12 is for the annual PFOS laboratory analysis services. We received four bids on November 13th and selected the lowest responsible bidder, Pace Analytical Services, in the amount of $90,080, and funds being allocated with the water utility operating budget.
Questions?
Yeah, I seem to recall that your lab was getting towards the point where they could do analysis in-house. How far away are we from that?
I was going to say for the next one, that affects it, but you cannot answer in general.
PFOS, we don't have any of the equipment in the current plan. It's probably about a year or two away. Right now, we're focusing on VOC testing in-house.
Yeah, that'll be reflected in the, in the other lab testing bit. It actually isn't yet, but I'll get, I guess I'm done with that one.
Anybody else? No? Go ahead.
Okay, so for the, for the non-PFOS, for the, for the laboratory analysis services, we received four bids on November 13th, selected the lowest responsible bidder, also Pace Analytical, in the amount of, oh, wait, I'm reading that. Oh, in the amount of $177,755, with funds being allocated in the water utility operating budget. The two other bidders, although lower, did not meet our requirement of having their lab within an hour of Ridgewood. So Pace won that bid. And, and the part about in-house, the VOCs, as Rich mentioned, will be tested in-house. They're part of this bid, but they'll be removed once we're fully certified. So that's what we're getting toward. I don't know if you have a date on that, or?
So our, our lab chemist has been approved by the New Jersey DEP for this method. She just needs to complete the audit, whereby they'll send her actual samples to, to test and, and review her results.
Good. Anybody? Go ahead.
Okay, and the next item is landscaping services for your water facilities. This is the award of the second year of a two-year contract. This is in the amount of $149,950, and this is out of the water utility budget.
Questions? Let's go.
Next item is servicing repair of electric source. This is for our licensed electrician. This is also year two of a two-year contract to Venor Electric, Inc., in the amount of $250,000 for the year, not to exceed. This is also funded out of the water utility operating budget.
Questions? Let's go.
Next item is water billing and data collection, CompuTil. This is the service that provides all our billing, mails the bills, collects the money, maybe the lockbox, and back to Ridgewood. We had a three-year contract with two one-year options. We're looking to exercise the first option year, an award a not-to-exceed contract to CompuTil for $343,068. This is also out of the water utility operating budget.
So when you, when you come before us and give us data on how much water our residents are consuming, it's based on the billing that CompuTil is doing for us?
It's, it's based out of their billing system from the reeds that we, we do on the road and then enter into their system. They have a proprietary software that we utilize for that.
Anybody else? Let's go.
Next item is award of a source well contract to Granger. This is our annual purchase of various supplies for the water utility. This is an amount of not to exceed $65,000, and this is also funded out of the water utility operating budget.
Is this mostly janitorial supplies?
It references janitorial. That's just a small piece. This could be various items. It could be dehumidifiers for a pump station. It could be parts.
Like safety vests?
Safety vests, cleaning equipment. They offer a slew of products.
Good. Thank you. Continue.
Next one is an award of cooperative purchase to Brainstone Industries. This is the layer below all the pavement. This is for purchase of stone, backfill material, and is a recommendation not to exceed of $100,000 for the year. This is also funded out of the water utility operating budget.
Questions? Let's go.
Next item is our annual contract with Hock Company. This is also a cooperative contract. Hock does the maintenance of all our pH disinfectant, sodium hypochlorite, and phosphate analyzers. These are at all our treatment facilities to monitor the concentration that's being entered into the water, to make sure we're meeting all state standards. This is an amount to not exceed of $74,980,000. This is also funded out of the water utility operating budget.
Questions?
They're monitoring from afar? I see they're in Colorado, and they come twice a year?
They come twice a year to do surface. They have a local branch here in New Jersey.
Ah, okay.
Nationwide.
Let's go.
Next one is our annual software support contract for our SCADA vendor Emerson. Last year was the end of our three-year contract. We're looking for award of a new three-year contract with a not-to-exceed yearly price of $22,549.46, and this is also funded out of the water utility budget.
Questions? Continue.
Next item is our annual hydrogeological consultant services. This is for our hydrogeologists who do various services. This is the amount not to exceed $109,000 for the year 2025. This is the firm WSP. This is also funded out of the water utility operating budget.
Questions? Go.
Next is a new service for the year. This is our customer collection service. This is also with the firm CompuTil. It's a sole source award to CompuTil in the amount of $53,000 for the year. This is to start a collections program utilizing CompuTil as a third-party service. We estimate we have arrears of close to $1.76 million in uncollected revenue. This goes back to COVID when we weren't allowed to shut down customers, and then furthering through the years with a winter termination program that the state enacted. We're now looking to move on this arrear amount. We did a pilot program with CompuTil before the end of the year with 10 customers, and we're able to collect from all 10 without even having to go to a shut-off.
Questions? Good.
Okay, item 23 is for a change order from our last main-to-curb, main-to-curb service line replacement contract. We are requesting an additional amount of $49,000 for a total contract amount of $200,000. Funds are accounted for in the water utility capital budget, as we had anticipated up to $250,000 to fund this critical lead service line replacement work for the utility side main-to-curb portion.
Questions? Go.
Our last item is the reimbursement of an overpayment for an account. This is a Ridgewood account. The house was sold, and we received a duplicate payment from both the owner's attorney and the title company. So we need to reimburse one amount back. It's the amount of $1,481.98.
Everybody good? Good. Thank you both so much. I will say, Lonnie, this is your first time here, but in 16 minutes, you got us to spend a little over $6 million, pretty smoothly. So, Rich, I might bring her with me next time. Just saying. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm going to stick around for landfill disposal.
I don't know if you know this, but I am a Ridgewood resident also, so welcome to the new council member. And I always like to come to these meetings. I don't come to all of them, obviously. I come when I need to, but I enjoy them, so thank you.
I think, I think he needs you more, just, you know, saying. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have nothing under parking utility tonight. Under budget, award of contract 2025 Recreation Program Instruction. This is a recommendation from Katie Frye, our recreation supervisor, to reappoint various vendors for 2025 to continue to operate our recreation programs. These are outside vendors. Any objection?
Questions?
Okay, item two, I'm going to kick back to Rich.
So this is our annual contract for the landfill disposal of our solid waste. This is for rear garbage and for bulk garbage that's collected by our employees. This is an annual contract. Looking for year two of the contract and not to exceed an amount of $872,860 to the firm IWS, and this is out of the operating budget for the village.
Questions? Good.
Item three is a recommendation from the Ridgewood Police Department for the purchase of equipment and service for vehicles, requesting to award a purchase order to Winter Ford of Cherry Hill to purchase, install, and repair vehicles purchased in 2024, including police emergency lights, safety equipment, and other equipment that is put into our police cars. This is being based on a state contract, and they've had excellent record of service from this vendor. This is a contract not to exceed $60,000.
Everybody good? Let's go.
Item four is relative to the replacement of the underground fuel storage tank and fuel system project at the Fleet Services Division location on Chestnut Street. As the council knows, we previously awarded a contract to Betts Environmental Service for not to exceed $769,299. During the course of the project, we did encounter some contaminated soil, which was anticipated. There was an unknown 300-gallon, single-wall carbon steel tank filled with oil that was encountered during the project. We did the remediation that was required and did the excavation work. However, it was enlarged. The area that we needed to restore was larger than anticipated. It exceeded the, succeeded by about 65 square yards. So the total charge for this recommended change order is $3,835 on that contract.
Good. Questions?
And that, that facility is up and running. Both Chris Rudis-Hauser and Mike Junt are very pleased with the outcome, and I know all the employees who have to fuel up their vehicles over there are happy with the upgrades that were made.
So you had a $769,000 contract. You found an extra tank, got that out, and the change order was only $3,800?
Well, this is the second change. Well, this is the second change order. Okay. So. All right. Item five on the agenda is to accept a donation to the Ridgewood Community Center. This is a monetary donation. Each year, the Recreation Department volunteers and members of the community work at the Ridgewood Run, and they man the water table. And as a thank you for that endeavor, the New Jersey Masters is donating a thousand dollars back to our community center.
That's great.
And I just want to say, and I think Frank does as well, thanks to Liz Cloke, who always does this. This is great. And, you know, it's hot... Sometimes everyone loses their effort, and she always pulls through because she knows this money's coming.
She makes sure it's manned.
Right.
And I've manned that table on Fairfield before. It's really fun. It's a great way to see the race.
Item six on the agenda is a recommendation from Parks and Recreation Director Nancy Beigos to purchase a Diamond C trailer. This is going to be purchased from Hampton RV Sales out of Newton, New Jersey. This is a dump trailer will be used to transport the new mini loader. Purchase price is twenty-one thousand fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and the funds are allocated through the 2023 capital budget.
Everybody good?
Item seven is a recommendation from the Ridgewood Police Department for a shared services agreement with the Borough of Paramus to maintain the new motorcycle unit, which consists of two motorcycles that have been previously approved by council. The Borough of Paramus has a certified mechanic who is able to work on these. And the alternative to do it privately is significantly more expensive than doing it with Paramus, which the labor rate is one hundred and fifty dollars per hour during normal business hours and two-twenty-five if it's out for an emergency.
Questions? Let's go.
Okay, moving on to policy. We have three items tonight. First is authorization to install a New Jersey Transit bus shelter at Ridgewood High School and authorize the execution of the aforementioned agreement. And by the way, we do have concurrence from the county and from the Ridgewood Board of Education on this project.
Anybody have any questions on this?
My only question is, are you gonna let Robin know?
I can't. Actually, I think she emailed me and I responded to her.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so I think she's in the loop. Item two under policy is to amend Chapter 260.
Whoa, 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 I did have a question on the bus shelter. Have we gotten a picture of what these bus shelters look like?
It's gonna be... We're requesting a similar bus shelter to what's on North Monroe near the tennis courts.
Ah.
So it's a little bit more decorative than the traditional New Jersey Transit bus shelter.
Okay.
Okay.
But not a lot more decorative.
I'm familiar with that one. Okay.
It's not custom, but it's slightly more decorative. Item two is to amend Chapter 260, which is the tree protection ordinance. And for this discussion, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Winograd and to Mr. Rogers.
Okay, well, it's not just me because... So I wanted to say that upon taking my role as Shade Tree liaison about two years ago, they... The sentiment from the committee was they felt that the first ordinance, which at that time was required by NGDEP, was good, but there was room for improvement. And a very thorough, comprehensive, and exhausting effort occurred with both Pam and Lorraine of how we could modify it. There were some elements in here that came out that, you know, we need to beef up the ordinance, but we also need to beef up enforcement, hence the word "tree sheriff", which is a very real request each year in the budget. You know, you saw the presentation by George Wolfson, which showed even with the tree protective ordinance, there's a lot of workarounds and things like that. And there needed to be a refining of it. So Shade Tree met, voted, voted again, fought, came back. And at a certain point, we sent George Wolfson, who I want to give an extra big thank you because he really went into the ordinance review committee with lawyers, which I am not, and Pam and Paul. And they tried to strike a balance of how we could do this, where we could make it a little bit... Have more teeth, but also not make it punish the homeowner. So the example that, you know, we always use in Shade Tree is that a brand-new homeowner buys it and they find a tree that's in need of removal. How do you do that? So they remove it so it doesn't fall on their brand-new house or hurt them, and yet make sure that a new restorative tree gets planted. We talked a lot about equivalence. So not all trees, you know, have the same hump to it and environmental impact. And we've heard a lot about the big trees and their impact. So if you take down a big oak or a big, large tree and you put in a dogwood, it's not gonna do its environmental horsepower. So all of that is encapsulated in here. It's gone through many iterations. I'm very proud of it. You know, I don't know... I don't think we want to go through and read it line by line. I don't know if we want to let the public know and see if there's any changes.
Yeah, the one point that I'll make is that in Section 260-8, there has been verbiage added to the ordinance that allows for a licensed tree expert to come out and evaluate a tree. But it also needs to be verified by the village arborist or his or her designee, which could be someone from our Parks Division. So I think that's important. I do think that we were experiencing some situations where people were coming in for permits and they were getting something written out, but it wasn't necessarily verified. Here, there'll be that added layer of making sure that the tree that's proposed to be removed will actually be verified as needing to be removed. And I think that's an important point.
I think that's fine. The red line's yours, the ordinance committee, everyone's. Who... Like, I... Who's... I can go back to that.
This was the latest ingredient.
That's fine. That's... I mean, look, I think for the public, the Shade Tree in the essence, because it gets very tree-y in there. And they've... I really am proud of them because they've balanced a lot, too. It... The changes are fine. That's fine. You know, I'm fine with all the changes in the red line. If anybody else has any input, I would like to circulate it back to them before the vote next week. I don't know how anybody feels if there's anything...
And keep in mind, this will only be introduced next week if that's the council's intention. It won't be adopted until the February meeting.
My goal is to introduce it.
I think it's great. I just want to say it's a wonderful... And I like all the extra additions and the size of the tree. The one thing that I wanted to bring up, and it's not to make any changes because I think we should go through with this, but is the enforcement, as you say, the tree sheriff. And not just for this ordinance, but we have a lot of quality-of-life issues. And let's face it, in Ridgewood, it's mostly about first-world problems, right? So this, and then at some point when we have a leaf blower ordinance and things like that, having somebody actually enforce that, I think, is key. And like in here, I'm sorry, but to say that Director of Parks and Recreation, I don't envision Nancy Beigos driving around giving summonses for trees. And so I think that in the future, we need to really address a realistic way that residents can report issues. And that needs to be more than just nine to five, Monday through Friday, and that we can have somebody that can actually enforce it and make sure that these things that we're codifying are happening.
So through you, Mayor, to Councilman Mortimer, a lot of that is gonna be discussed at budget.
Okay.
It's already been identified by multiple department heads, including Parks and Recreation, Engineering, because they issue the permits. You know, that the intention, I think, of the Shade Tree Commission, and having met with George within the last few weeks, is that we need this in place. And then we need the enforcement power to make sure that this ordinance is being met. That being said, it takes resources to do that. And how we assign those responsibilities are gonna be impacted by some of the budget discussions that we are about to undertake.
Excellent. And that's why I wanted to separate it, because I didn't want to slow this down because it is wonderful, so.
And just, I mean, I know you know this, Frank, but, you know, the idea of putting the directors of the departments in charge or being able to issue summonses for enforcement or their designee allows them to delegate that within their department so that it can be taken care of. I wouldn't expect Nancy to be out driving around looking for that either.
However, however, I do have a...
She probably does.
I do have a department director who issues summonses regularly, two, actually. So, you know, it really depends on the structure of the department and how they operate.
And also, I'm not saying this, but when something goes wrong with the removal, I mean, it does accelerate. We've had clear-cutting on property where it's gotten... All of us have gotten these emails. So I don't, you know, I don't... Clearly, I'm glad everybody, you know, looked at it, read it. Today's what, the eighth?
Yes.
So I don't... How do you want to do this?
It could be introduced next week.
When is the Shade Tree meeting?
The fourteenth.
All right, so the following meeting, the following night, we could list it for introduction.
Okay.
And if there's any feedback from Shade Tree.
Oh, no, no, they voted. They're not gonna do that. They're gonna be happy.
But we'll know that going into the introduction night.
So can I get any, like, little edit copies to whoever? And by Monday, can I get a clean copy sent to me for them?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Like, no red line. That might, like...
I think the red line highlights where they want to see, where the changes are so that people want to...
But she needs a clean copy.
I need a clean copy.
Okay.
And I want to say this because the committee, and this is important, the committee, as a working committee, put George, and George has been at the table, and they were good with the essence of it. So I don't want to give them...
Got it.
Yeah. They don't need to see all the changes in the red line form.
So we'll have the feedback from Shade Tree if there is any.
Yep.
The day, the day of the introduction. And if there's any modifications that we need to consider, we can have it.
You'll probably have it instantaneously on the fourteenth.
I'm sure I'll have it Tuesday night before I vote to adjourn.
To your point, Frank, yes, staffing is a big consideration. And in the first go-round, one of the reasons we didn't have the arborist approving removal of trees was we couldn't conceive of him having enough time. Because he's pulled in so many different directions.
Well, especially if he has to validate what all the licensed arborists are saying. So, yeah, I already see a lot of his time being used.
And also, in terms of enforcement, I must have called up engineering ten times in the past couple of years saying, "Hey, there's a tree coming down on such-and-such a street. Do they have a permit? And if Chris Rudis-Hauser isn't in, ask Yendi Anderson. She knows." And they go and check. And Chris or somebody will go out there right away, catch them when they... When the stump is fresh and you can tell whether it's really dying or viable or not. We should all be... If you see a tree being taken down, call engineering.
Well, I think that's part of, you know, looking at it through a resident's eyes, they might not know to call Chris. So maybe one of the things we should also talk about is how do we publicize or communicate? You see this, this is who you should call.
Oh, if you see something, say something.
Yeah. Right.
And I think, I think, actually, I know that that's on Carol's radar once this is adopted. To be able to message this out, what this means for the residents, how to apply for the permit, what the process looks like. But we didn't want to do that until the new ordinance was introduced.
Wow. Fun fact, Shade Tree's gonna issue some fun facts on Arbor Day. And, you know, this is one of the bullet points. We want to, you know, after Access had a wholly dedicated committees, they felt this was good. It is a line item. And keep in mind, awareness is a huge mission and education of Shade Tree. And to Pam's point, we do get people who call us and say, "This looks wrong." And then, you know, I'll call, and it can be wrong. So the more people know about this, the more information, the better it'll be. And hopefully, if the press is picking this up, it'll amplify it and there'll be a discussion because it's a good thing. And, you know, so I just want to say thank you again to all the lawyers and Keith. And it was one of those meetings I was so psyched to be boxed out of as you guys hashed it out. And a big thank you to George Wolfson.
All set?
So the next item...
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, now all set.
I would like to... Were any changes made to the penalties?
No. Not... This has not gone back to Shade Tree yet from George.
Okay. I think we should be looking at the penalties at the same time. Okay?
Separate words. It would take a different... It would take a different action. But we can... But if you can add that to the Shade Tree Commission.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna... Some of them are gonna be like one million dollars. But no, we can go to penalties. We can... Yeah.
Well, I think the issue is then, Pam, do you want to hold this until we...
No, it's separate. It'll be separate.
It's a separate ordinance, Mayor.
Just want to make sure. Just want to make sure. Good. Okay, let's move on.
Let me just make a note.
And you're not gonna forget, Keith?
No, I'm writing it down now. Okay, next item on the agenda, actually excited about this. I want to thank Jeremy Kleiman, our OEM Coordinator and Chief Judge from the Fire Department. They have been in talks with the folks at Valley Hospital. And since Valley closed back in April here in Ridgewood and relocated to Paramus, the paramedics have been located in Paramus, and they also have a unit in Wykoff. What this is going to allow us to do is have a Valley paramedic squad assigned to Thirty-three Douglas Place at our EMS building so that they can have a quicker response here in Ridgewood. So this agreement will allow for an additional paramedic unit, ALS 404. They'll respond from Ridgewood, from Douglas Place, to ensure that we have proper paramedic coverage here in the village. The Fire Department has seen an increase in paramedics, paramedic calls. And because of the distance, obviously, there's a delayed response in getting here than there was when Valley was operational here in the village. Both Valley and Ridgewood, through these discussions, thought it was beneficial to create a fourth paramedic unit from Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and stage it here in Ridgewood. They'll have access to the Douglas Place utilizing the kitchen and common area and bathrooms. It has been agreed that the garages, bedrooms, and offices are not part of the access agreement. This will be a one-year trial period. And quite frankly, they're already staging from the location, and this will formalize that relationship.
Sounds like a terrific idea. Everybody?
Yeah, I think it's great, and I think it's gonna really serve our residents well. So great job to everyone that made this happen.
Good.
Thank you.
And thanks to Valley.
Yep. Next item under operations, we have some recommendations for amendments to various salary ordinance. This has to do with contractual obligations where the range needs to be modified for calendar year 2025.
Questions?
Okay.
Let's go.
Item two under operations is to establish a stop sign at Heights Road and Avondale Road. This is being recommended by Engineering and the Police Department.
So it just seems strange.
I have the same point.
Yeah, me, too.
We do... In Chris's memo, he said that there was a stop bar and double-yellow line painted on here. And he says, "We do not know who installed the stop bar and tail." And now we are putting a stop sign there.
So it is a mystery.
It is a mystery.
However, after proper evaluation, one of two things could have happened. Either the stop sign could be added, which is the recommendation, or black paint could have been taken up to the intersection and cover up what was painted.
I don't think it's the remedy that's strange.
But there is a... There is concurrence that the stop sign is warranted.
It's more that somebody had the foresight to put the bar in, and now we've agreed to finish the job and put the stop sign in. It just seems...
The tail may be wagging the dog on this one, but apparently it's warranted.
Let's do it, but it's a very strange story.
Yes.
So, and let's move on.
Concurrence on the stop sign, Paul?
Yep, absolutely.
Item three is authorized application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the local recreation improvement grant for improvements to the Grayden Park Skate Park. Skate park was added down near the stable back in 2015. Did sustain damage during the 2021 flood event. And obviously, the constant use from skateboarders, which, as you can understand, there's some wear and tear there. The grant application will be for a one-hundred-thousand-dollar maximum award, and the grant funds will go towards crack repair, resurfacing, painting of the rink, and the purchasing of new equipment to supplement the skate rink.
Questions?
I just think it's great. It's always been at the Parks and Rec meeting, it's amazing at how much use that park gets.
Oh.
So it's really great that we're...
And the beauty of that is it keeps them off other public spaces where we really don't want skateboarders. So it gives them a place to go. The next few resolutions are requests from Share Inc. for community development block grants. The first is for roof repairs at 130 Prospect Street in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The second is for roof repairs at 104 Cottage Place for forty-three thousand dollars. Next is a request for an endorsement from the Children's Aid and Family Services for a new generator at 29 Washington Place, sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Next is a request for a community development block grant from Children's Aid Family Services replacement for an HVAC system at 29 Washington Place, total amount of eleven thousand dollars. And the last request is from Family Promise. This is a request for an endorsing resolution for a proposed project to be funded by CBDG for accelerating families' futures with job readiness, total amount twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Good?
Mayor, that concludes my portion of the agenda.
Thank you. Let's go back to public comment.
Good evening. Ann Loving, Ridgewood resident. Very much agree with Councilman Mortimer talking about enforcing an ordinance, the tree ordinance. There's so many ordinances in this town that never get enforced, like overnight parking on the street, the Airbnb ordinance... on the street, the Airbnb ordinance, I mean, people advertise their Airbnbs, like, just totally ignoring it, the lawn watering. I think recycles are not supposed to be out before, like, four o'clock on the day before. There, people put them out whenever they feel like it, so I'm all for the tree ordinance enforcement, and I certainly do hope that other ordinances could get a little teeth. And I just also wanted to say something about the, the One Village One Vote initiative that former Councilwoman Reynolds talked about on Monday night. It needs to be pointed out that, of course, that vote passed with a great, with a great majority, not taking that away, but as a result, zero citizens can vote on the school board budget when the election is in November. It took away our right to vote on that, so that's a very serious loss in terms of democracy, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone have any, oh, wait, we have, excuse me, so sorry, didn't see you stand up. You are absolutely, you are better than okay.
Yeah, great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Happy New Year, everyone.
And Happy New Year to you, Boyd.
And hope it's a great year coming up. My wife and I had a occasion recently to attend a Ridgewood Board of Education meeting. And I realize that the Board of Education's budget is multiple times what your budget is. But I will say this about the Board of Education. When you were in the room attending a meeting of the Board of Education in person, you can hear what everybody on the dais is saying in that room. It is relatively embarrassing that we still have a situation that those of us who sit in this room can hear every other word that is said up on the dais. And I don't understand it. I don't understand what is the matter with the acoustics and the sound system in this room. One of the problems is that many of you turn away from the mic like this, and you're speaking to other people on the dais rather than talking into the microphone. When you do that, those of us in the room cannot hear you. The people on the dais that you're speaking to can hear you, but those of us who are in the room cannot hear you when you do that. And it, to me, it's disrespectful for those of us who are in the room, and I'm sure the same holds true for those who are watching on TV, that it's difficult to hear when you move away from the microphone. So please keep that in mind. You need to speak in, directly into the microphones. I know that the mayor encourages everybody to do it, but I sit in the back of the room, you know, I'm a regular attendee of these meetings, and I watch people. They turn to, speak to the person next to them, and then all of a sudden, we can't hear, and I'm sure that the same thing happens to the people who are watching on TV. Another thing that I will say after attending Broadway shows over the holiday is I think these are the wrong microphones. I think these are noise-canceling microphones intended to be used in noisy environments, and that's why you have to get up close to them. I would suggest maybe you try one different style microphone and see if that helps, that you can hear when you move back. I see people in Broadway shows and see people at the Board of Education meeting, they're not right up on the microphones yet, you can hear them. So I don't know whether it's the windscreen on here that is the improper windscreen, or the design of the microphone is not proper, but if you have some money in the budget, try out at least one microphone, different microphone. Every single microphone in this room is the same. Every one of the microphones here, if you turn away from it, you can't hear the person who's speaking. So ask Dylan to try a different microphone and see what happens. As I said, I think these may be noise-canceling microphones that are designed to be used in noisy environments where you don't want to pick up a lot of the background noise. So, the other thing I want to say is that I appreciate the installation of the pedestrian crossing lights at North, South Irving Street and East Ridgewood Avenue, but I will say this, when you are standing there and you push the button, you don't know whether the lights are operating. I realize that you didn't put in the audible probably because of the residences in the area, you don't want to disturb them, but if there's some sort of visual indicator that can be put near the button, so you can make sure that the light did come on. And I'm not suggesting that people push the button and just walk out into the street, they've got to look, but it would be nice to know that the, that the lights are lit. And the way the configuration is there, when you're getting ready to cross the street, the lights are facing in the other direction, and you cannot see whether they're on in, in any of the places where the button is. Again, Happy New Year, and we hope, at least I hope that you get the microphone situation straightened out. Thank you so much.
And Boyd, before you go, just a question. So, and thank you for the observation. When we speak directly into the, you said, you said at one point, you only hear every other word. When we speak directly into the microphone.
It's fine.
Okay, and I'm not saying we shouldn't look into another microphone, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
That it wasn't, it wasn't, it was, it's only when, when somebody turns away from the microphone to face the, to face someone else on the dais, for example.
Right, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, you've really got to get close to the microphones. There's some of you who sit back from the microphones, and we, we can't hear, we just can't hear.
Listen, if there's a better microphone, my neck hurts from leaning forward like this.
This is very unnatural.
Again, I think, I don't think these are the right microphones for this sort of environment. I think they've got to be more sensitive. These appear to be noise-canceling microphones from.
And I think directional mic is one of these, too.
And what you, what they use on Broadway are the ones that come around from the ear to the mouth, and that's how you can dance.
Right, but the Board of Education, you know, I'm in that room, and I can hear every word that's said. I, I, and they turn to talk to one another, and I can still hear. I, this room, I, maybe it's the acoustics are the wrong.
Oh, well, the acoustics are terrible, but, but, but this is a different issue. I see Keith writing, so I know that he is looking. He's, he's got this on his list to look into, so thank you very much for the observation.
It's, it's really difficult to hear.
Nope, nope.
And Ms. Winograd stood up tonight and leaned up, it, it just makes it very difficult for us to hear, very difficult.
I heard my back earlier this weekend, I'm sorry, I've been, like, stretching, I warned everybody, we've been sinning.
Thank you so much.
I do, I do think piloting, and it's obvious, it's me and Evan, we're the worst, and I'm sorry about that, we know, we try, but we had a proposal for a lapel, so could we, could we demo it and see if the improvement is, I mean, no offense, Evan, we're the worst.
May I suggest not the lapel ones, because you could.
You're doing it.
I would say, don't try the lapel ones, because people walk away with them, they go to the bathroom, things like that. If you got the kind that goes around the ear, it's easier to take off. And, and you're more aware of it, and you're not going to walk out of this room with it. That's why I would.
Well, and to Boyd's point, if this is a directional mic, that might be the issue, that you can get different mics to pick up sounds like this and not just.
Heather and I will have a conversation with Dylan.
And this arm is just too short.
Oh, my gosh.
And we can demo them for free, I'm sure.
Thank you, Frank, yeah, directional, that might be it.
So, all right, Keith's going to look into this.
I just, I just have one other comment, and I, I don't know that it's well-known, but back in February of 2024, Ann, Governor Murphy signed into law, approved bill that eliminates the vote on school budgets for type-two school districts in April elections, unless it exceeds the tax levy. So that requirement to vote in April is no longer there, based on that legislation, unless it exceeds the 2%, which applies to the, the school districts that hold their elections in November as well. So that might be a bill that you want to, you want to look up, because apparently Murphy signed that into law.
Good, and we have one other commenter on Hybrid Access, Cynthia, you're up.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to clarify a few points, can you hear me?
Please, please state your name.
Oh, Cynthia O'Keith, Ridgewood resident. So I just, first I want to say thank you to Pam for reinforcing some of the, you know, negative contributors when it comes to artificial or synthetic grass, artificial turf. The few points I wanted to make, and I did personally speak to Dr. Evans at the end of September, and she is available. And I also don't think we should just limit, you know, our research and due diligence to one person. There are many experts that have done peer-reviewed studies on artificial turf, so that's number one. And I did speak to her at length. She is also a sports parrot, but she understands that there are known carcinogens and neurotopsons. And fun fact, for all of you, all turf has PFAS. It is the plastic in the extrusion process in making the turf, so it is not necessarily the infill, although that is also, contains chemicals. So there, there we go with that. So all turf contains PFAS, it is the plastic, which also sheds microplastics, hundreds of pounds per year, so therefore, bad for the environment. And I know, you know, Frank, you might have been part, and Pam might have been part of the Green Ridgewood research that David Refkin presented back in April, where the group said that they were against turf. So it's interesting that we can then go say, oh, I'm dropping my kids off at soccer, I'm not concerned about it. That's, and by the way, nobody who was pro-turf called David Refkin back when he reached out to you to, to talk about the, the negative impact. So that's one part. The field for 2017, which was eight years ago, yes, there was a proposal to put coconut infill, that was eight years ago. So are we going to just say, oh, but that was on the, the plan, and we're just going with it? Also, the field size was much smaller, so when I made a, I guess, a bit of a joke saying all the trees will come down, probably at the end of the day, in my mind, seeing what I've seen so far with the Shedler overdevelopment plan, you will, there will be a reason to knock them all down. Oh, this one's half-broken, that one looks sick, and they're all going to come down, unfortunately. Whether that's true or not, I hope my prediction doesn't stand true, it would be really sad. So the field size either more than doubled or doubled, so, which would mean that there are more trees coming down when you have a bigger field, and you also have to fit walking paths and other things, park amenities, into that plan. Okay, so the 2017 plan was smaller, fewer trees would have been taken down. So I think we've, like, exhausted that topic, and you're right, Shabon, we talk about it all the time, but facts are facts. So all turf has PFAS, we've said that. And by the way, the Synthetic Turf Council is a council made up of turf vendors who lobby in Washington. Millions of dollars are spent on turf. So of course, they're going to tell you anything you want to hear. Field turf is in a major lawsuit right now, based on lying and manipulating information to communities and municipalities that spent tax dollars and other monies buying their turf. And they said it was, you know, better than sliced bread, we all know it wasn't, and unfortunately, they are being sued in a class action lawsuit.
Cynthia, if you could finish up your thoughts.
Yes, well, you know, I have a lot of them, and I like to share.
No, I understand, but you're, you're well past your three minutes, which is why I want to give you an opportunity to just finish up.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear the.
No, I know, I understand, I understand, go ahead.
Okay, so, so really, I just, you know, obviously, timely administration of justice when it comes to health and safety, and I thank you all for your continued, you know, hopefully, we move forward in a positive direction, and that, you know, our neighborhood concerns are really taken to heart. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cynthia. Does anybody have any comments?
Yeah, I do.
I do, too.
Since Mount Sinai keeps being brought up, if, it's also on their, the blog that they do, so yes, that we've talked about the artificial turf, but they, the same people also write about the dangers of playing on grass that has all these chemicals that I'm talking on, and the recommendation they make is not to have children play on grass that's treated with chemicals. So when you look at their blog, they're listing all the dangers that exist in the world, and so it's, you know, it, it's not that it's just about artificial turf that they're focused on.
Thanks, Frank. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, because it's New Years, and, you know, everybody thinks of, how do you want to do this better? I want to say a couple of things. Shedler is more than a turf field. It is a massive open space that we purchased 15 years ago, and nobody, not an athlete, not a historian, has been able to use or experience. It, in 2017, I think the plan was read in 18, actually, not only did that plan highlight turf, but then that council, Empire Councils, funded for turf. The capital each year, wasn't like that just stopped, the funds that are available now were built by prior councils, so it was funded, attributed, and done. In terms of overdevelopment, I'm particularly sensitive of this, prior to this council, plainletting, what, you know, was plainly a controversial plan, two plans were submitted to the state. One was significantly overdeveloped, which we've all seen, and had to be fettered out, you know, by the public, had a pickleball court, had multiple amenities, and was rejected for being overdeveloped. That's problematic, because the whole land was used. In addition to that, it was not given to the public or any of the committees. My goal for Shedler, and, you know, we're, we're effectively at a disagreement, right? You know, it's like when you, you talk to your teenagers, and you're like, dude, I don't want to fight anymore. There's, that's really how I feel. I mean, there's, there's been a vote, it occurred many months ago, the majority has supported turf, it now needs to travel a separate process. What the town and everybody, we, we really need to get real about getting people in the house, talking about the environa, minimizing how much asphalt goes in there. There's other environmental things, there's other things that will take out trees. So my goal for Shedler is to say this, I have listened, I assure people I hear them, Shedler is not a field, it is a complicated project that is passed due to the public who is paid heavily for it. And we need to remember that when we talk about the field, we have to start talking about the house, because now we're going to be looking at deferred maintenance. So I have voted yes to turf, I have my reasons, I've tried to articulate, I'm available. We do not use field turf as a village, that is not our vendor, and I will try to address these things, but Shedler is going to go, given the number of votes here, on a path, and that'll hopefully happen this year, not just for the field, but for the whole thing. So my New Year's resolution is to remind the public that this is a park with many amenities, and there's many things that cause the trees to come down, and we can't just take this project and make it turf versus grass, it just can't be that. For me, it can't be. I mean, I'm, I'm listening to it all the time, but, so my New Year's resolution is if we want to talk about this, we should talk about the totality of the park, and we should honor the history, but hopefully, send it to Shippo soon, you know, hopefully remediate that land and make it safe. I mean, there's so much agreement on things in Shedler, and we just can't get beyond, again, like the teenager, I don't want to fight, I just want to remediate it, make it safe, and make it public.
Anybody else? Good.